I'd like to call this meeting to order. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distance guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in planning commission meetings until notified otherwise. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may be in the council chambers. All attendees are required to wear masks to enter the council chambers. The meetings will be webcast and accessed at the city's website. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in the meetings by accessing the website, providing written comments at the same website, participating by phone, or coming to the planning commission meeting in person. Again, we will practice social distancing guidelines and can only accommodate a maximum of 16 guests at one time. If you would all please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call?
Commissioner Antuna?
Here.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Here.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Here.
Chair Hatcher?
Here. And can we have approval of the minutes from last minute?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, second by Commissioner Hinkle to approve the minutes. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
And Chair Hatcher?
Yes. Do we have any comments from the commission secretary?
Yes, thank you. The, uh, there were two sets of comments that were received by staff over the last few days that were sent out to members of the planning commission earlier this afternoon. Those have also been provided to the commissioners in hard copy form for those in attendance. The, um, comments that have been distributed address the Butterfly Gardens project. That project has been proposed through the Regional Housing Needs Overlay Program, which is a program mandated by the state to certify the city's housing element. The only approval that is required for this project pursuant to the Regional Housing Needs Overlay Program will be a building permit. Though the commenters have directed comments to the planning commission, the project is not subject to review or approval by the planning commission. So any comments received will be acknowledged and placed into the record as public comments, but no decision will be made by the planning commission. During the section of this agenda for public comments, the requesters indicating that they prefer their letter to be read into the record, those letters will be read. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the planning commission members?
Um, yes. I would like to thank the city of Clovis for the great event that they did last week for Dwight Crowell. He was very, very deservant of that. Something that we should be proud of having him on the staff. And I know I really learned a lot from him in helping me and the planning commission, but I want to thank the city of Clovis for everything they did.
Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any comments?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. And do we have any business from the floor? This is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the planning commission on any matter that is not listed on the agenda for tonight.
Yes, good evening. Going off of Dave's comment regarding the letters that we received, I was going to read them into the record for those that requested that we did read them. So I have about seven comment letters here, so I'll state their name and then their comments. So the first one is from Katie Work. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to address the city council via internet during this pandemic. I am questioning the location of 784 West Holland Avenue as a chosen location for the potential construction of a 75-unit housing development specifically for low-income and homeless individuals. Councilmember Lynn Ashbeck said, "I'm betting there are not a lot of neighbors who live near there that are going to say housing for the homeless is good for the neighborhood. This is not going to make a bunch of people happy, I can assure you. I can concur that our neighborhood echoes this statement. If you look at the law enforcement statistics for just this year alone, I'm sure you will see that this area does have quite a lot of incidents. Just this week alone, there have been three incidents of vandalism and one theft reported to law enforcement in less than a five-mile radius of the proposed building location. This proposed location is also right next to a kids' care and a park. What precautions would be taken in vetting a potential occupant that they are not a sex offender? Jessica's Law, which was passed in 2006, states that sex offenders cannot live within 2,000 feet of a school or park. A registered sex offender living in the proposed housing would be violating this law. There has to be better location for this resource." Mayor Drew Besinger said, "When addressing the proposed location, this could be problematic, but I want to make it successful. I feel there is a great need for low-income and homeless housing in Clovis. I think there, I think more time and thought is needed to come up with a location that will not only fill this need, but be embraced by the local residents." Thank you. So this next letter is from Nathan and Heather Tucker. "My family and I are concerned about the 75-unit housing complex going up next year. I am concerned because the homeless have already been a problem, causing security issues in our neighborhood. Additionally, my wife and young daughter could be potential targets for violent crime. Please do not build this complex here. We have a dense population as it is, given all of the apartment complexes on both the Fresno and Clovis side. There have to be other overlay lots that would be a better fit. Please consider another location for the safety of our children, please." Next letter is from Makita Rivera. "I am writing as a concerned resident of forgotten Clovis in opposition to the planning commission's recommendation and City Clovis Council's approval of the building of the 75-unit housing project on the southeast corner of Willow and Holland. As a resident of the community, more than 100 residents advise they were not informed of this project being built in their neighborhood. With the infrastructure of the southwest side of Clovis, our neighborhood has been lacking for quite some time. The city of Clovis continues to permit developers to intensify land uses while the mitigation for infrastructure in our community is neglected. Many of the community recognize that Willow Avenue is an arterial street that may, that many of us utilize daily, which is why the proposed location is not ideal for the building of a housing unit to be inhabited by homeless subjects on such a busy intersection/street. The proposed project will negatively affect Viking Elementary School as it will make students already facing the traffic issues walking to and from school walk in fear for their safety. Residents have yet to be informed of how tenants will be chosen for these units. Secondly, the proposed location for such a housing unit is not close enough for the levels of service those inhabiting those units will need. Our community already faces issues with police response in our community. Adding something of this nature would increase police calls for service. Lastly, the proposed location right next door to a kids' care, daycare preschool facility will not sit well with the parents who are already well-versed with the homeless community and the dangers they bring to the streets of Fresno and Clovis. There are hundreds of beds at the Pavarello and Rescue Mission that go unfilled every night in the city of Fresno. The problem is not lack of services or housing for homeless subjects. The problem is our county is known to have a meth city and moving homeless subjects into these units will only attract their homeless friends, drug dealers, and who knows what else. My hope is that you will reconsider the location and make note that we are currently facing a pandemic. The homeless population does not care about their hygiene, so who knows what types of illnesses and germs they will bring to our community. I am not against the homeless, but I know firsthand that this is not the answer. In closing, I would like to thank you for the time and consideration. I would request the city of Clovis oppose or request all necessary mitigation in relation to traffic and public safety concerns." Next letter is from Susan Oliver. "Our community is passionately requesting a site better suited with the appropriate level of services, easily accessible public transportation, such as lot located northeast corner of Santa Ana and Willow, which is better suited for the intended homeless mentally-challenged tenants for which Fresno County DBH and Housing Authority are suggesting as residence for item 22, southeast corner of Holland and Willow. Crime will exponentially increase. Vagrancy, drug use, and prostitution will invade our properties, homes, and neighborhoods. Human biohazard waste and drug paraphernalia will be present. Our established homeowner property value will decrease, and our children who walk through this particular area to and from school will be subjected to a quality of life not suited for our neighborhood, which places item 22, Butterfly Gardens, 11 houses east, four houses north of an elementary school next door to childcare center. Not here. This is borderline property of Clovis Line, east side of winery, Fresno west side of winery. Mass confusion when contacting emergency services is the norm. When contacting 911, 2020 census is 118,000 residents, 100 CPD. Our neighborhood and the increase in dangerous crime will explode in our area. We were not informed, and this proposal is being rushed through. So not appropriate. Visit Pavarello House, Santa Clara Apartments, and Alta Monte Apartments, both in Fresno, California, to offer housing for low-income housing to previous homeless, high-risk behavioral health. Shopping carts, tenants, human feces, syringes, blatant prostitution, not here." This next letter is from Kelly Devlin. "The parcel of land on Willow and Holland, it's going to be dedicated to homeless, as I had heard. If this is so, you have a daycare down the street, you have a school west of there, and a park not too far away. The impact it will have on the community will be more loitering, especially with the quickie mart across the street, impact of cars, mental health issues with homeless. How are all these going to be addressed? I do not want this in my neighborhood. Are you trying to make this look like the Pavarello House? Because that will end up just, that will end up just like it with homeless sleeping on the sidewalks because they, they heard there's free rent, multiple people living in the units because they have friends there. Has to be another solution for the homeless." This next one is from Rebecca Devlin. "I am in protest of, of the 375-unit housing facility. It will bring unwanted crime, drugs, and violence to the streets of Clovis. It will devalue property and is unsafe. It is not fit to be put up next to a childcare. It will create unwanted loitering in the area and at Clovis Parks." And this is the last one. This is from Stacy Christman. "Dear Clovis City Council, Planning Commission, and everyone involved in item number 22. I have been resident in Clovis since 1998. My first apartment was the Scotsman Willow Geddesburg, first home purchased in the Holland-Helm area, and I currently live in the winery Geddesburg area. Throughout the years, I've moved into north Fresno, Clovis High areas, always returning to this quiet, wonderful area of Clovis. My children were both born at Clovis Community Hospital, and I watched them grow into adulthood in Clovis and Fresno schools. I am strongly opposed for item number 22, Butterfly Gardens, being built on the corner of Willow and Holland. Sequin needs to be a factor in your choice of a location. This corner is very busy from traffic already, especially during school drop-off and pickup. Intersection heavily condensed with regular pedestrians, parents, children, and unattended children crossing all on their own with no crosswalk. This crossing area would give children and tenants of Butterfly Gardens interactions daily, visually and socially. This is concerning if Butterfly Gardens would resemble Alta Monte Renaissance and Santa Clara. Our family church has, has experience in homeless outreach. Your proposed location would also share a fence line with kids' care involving those children to have interactions with tenants as well. Being from this residential area for a long time, I know how long a drive, walk, bus ride to a pharmacy, medical care, grocery stores, and things that tenants would need. These neighborhoods have always required extra drive time to get to simple appointments and daily needs. Please find new location for Butterfly Gardens that will not impact children, families, and benefit the tenants. Thank you." That's all I have.
And if you could state your first and last name and provide your address for the record?
I'm David Lynch, 834 West Holland. Okay, with all that stuff said, what was it mentioned is that most people that are homeless have alcohol and drug abuse problems. So you only got the daycare center over here, but there's a liquor store right across the street. So if you're trying to help out the homeless that pretty much don't have jobs because of alcohol and drug problems, and you're dangling a liquor store right in front of them, it's right there on the corner of Shaw and Clovis Avenue, or Willow. You're not gonna, well, you're just, it's not gonna be helping the homeless any. And that's, and there is no cop presence over there at all. They drag race all the time from Geddesburg to Ashland because there's no light in between there, so there's people speeding up and down that road all the time. There's been a lot of wrecks there right on Holland and Willow there. I've been robbed twice since we were there, and my neighbor had a roommate at one time about two years ago. He called, he, his roommate, they have parties every frickin' Friday night, and it's the whole street be lined up with his friends. We called the cops, and one of the dispatchers from over here called us up and said, "Quit calling them because they're not doing anything wrong." And they say there's no cop presence over there. You're all welcome to my house about nine o'clock tonight, and you could see how many cars drive up there that shake the house with their stereos up so dang loud. And like the phone person said, there's no way, there, there's stores around there they could walk to and everything, but it's a liquor store right there across the street. It's just gonna be dangling, if they are trying to get sobriety or anything, it's right there dangling in front of their face. Real simple on that. And if, if this is the way that Clovis just has to push everything to the far corner of Clovis to get rid of, don't have anything involved with, it'll be problems like that to make their subs look good. So, you know, hey, we have people over here, we have homeless people living over here to make it look good, it ain't right. There's gotta be other places in Clovis to do it. But I, between a liquor store and a kiddie care place, just ain't right. I guess that's all I got to say, added with my neighbors. And there was a thing on their, on the internet on this that said, "Well, there's not enough black people that live in the neighborhood." I, I've been walking my dogs there, I lived there over 20 years. There's every nationality in our neighborhood. There's every nationality. There's black, Asians, Mexicans, gay people, there's everybody that lives in that area. We got hundreds of apartments in a five-square park. They're all the way from, what, um, Willow over there, Peach, all the way down Ashland to Willow. They're all the way down, um, what, Peach to, um, the, what, just, they're all, they're all around there. There's no, can't say there's not enough apartments around there, there's hundreds of them. And then we get the, the big problem is that Fresno's pushed these little crappy apartments over there on the other side of winery, and this is where the gangsters and shit, or, excuse my language, but they're driving down the street all the time. Between Willow and just my house, everybody speeds up, they gotta be going about 45 miles from the corner of Willow, and I live two houses in from Willow, they get going about 40 miles per hour all the time. And there's, there isn't, a cop could sit there and make all kinds of ticket money, but they're, they're never around, never. Somebody's gonna end up getting hurt one of these days. And they, yeah, it's just messed up over there right now. And getting all a bunch of homeless druggies and alcoholics in there, hey, I feel for it, I was an alcoholic, I drank myself to death. But I know it's hard, but sitting there in front of a liquor store when you come out of your house, it ain't gonna help. And it's gonna, like I said, I've lived there over 20 years. It's gonna, our housing prices are gonna go down because of it. And these people that want this thing built there, yeah, they wanna make money, but they don't care about anybody around there. And you go walk around and check out what's going on over there before they just swap a place and wanna make some money and screw up a whole neighborhood. But I guess that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving more than three minutes.
Okay, any other business from the floor? Okay, seeing none, I will go to the first item on the agenda. Consider Approval TM 6161, a request to approve a one-year extension to approved tentative tract map TM 6161 located at the southeast area of Ashland and Thompson Avenue, Stone Valley Communities LLC, owner applicants. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Hatcher, members of the commission. As you noted, this is a request for an extension of a tentative map. The project is located near the corner of Ashland and Thompson Avenue. The mapping question includes 142 lots. The tentative map was originally approved during the spring of 2017. In order to allow that map to record and come into the city, it does need to be annexed into the city limits. The developer has been diligently pursuing annexation since the map was approved, and there's some things that have to fall into place in order to make that happen that he doesn't directly control, but he has been working on it. The original approval was valid for three years. Six one-year extensions are allowed. This is the first request for a one-year extension. Staff's recommendation is to approve the one-year extension for tentative map 6161. If you have to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. And is the applicant here? Do you have anything you want to say? No? Okay. Okay, I will open it up to the public. Does anyone in the audience have anything to say in favor for this item? Anyone in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public portion and bring it back. Does any commission member want to make a motion?
Motion to approve tentative tract map 6161, and the extension, I'm sorry, the extension of tentative tract map 6161.
Call second.
Motion by Commissioner Antuna, second by Commissioner Hinkle to allow one-year extension for tentative map 6161. Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
And Chair Hatcher?
Yes. Okay, moving on to the next item. Consider Approval SPR 2020-002, a request to consider an appeal of the site plan review approval for an industrial development located at 561 North Dewitt within the Dry Creek Business Park project. Home blessed real estate and corporate property owner, Partners 425 LLC, Bearclaw Investments LLC, Dan and Joey Properties LLC, applicants, Dowling Aaron Incorporated, Andrew Slater, representative. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Hatcher. Good evening, members of the commission. Item number three is a request to appeal the approval of Site Plan Review 2020002, which is a proposal for an industrial development located at 561 North Dewitt Avenue. The property is located within the Dry Creek Business Park as well as in the Herden Shepherd's specific plan area. SPR 202002, or the project, entails an approximately 11,470 square foot building to be utilized as office and warehousing, as well as associated site improvements such as parking and landscaping and utilities. This exhibit here shows the proposed site layout with the building oriented near the corner, near the northwest corner of the parcel and parking along the interior of the parcel. The project proposes two access points, one from Spruce and the other from Dewitt Avenue, and the project also proposes fencing to enclose the parking area. This is the north and west-facing elevation proposed for this project. These elevations are the elevations that are facing the street. With that, the developer is providing metal paneling along the front, along the top portion of the building. The majority of the building facade is made up of stucco, and the developer is also providing stone veneer skirting along the bottom of these elevations. And they are also providing metal awnings over the proposed windows on these elevations. So you'll see that there are several materials utilized for the facades of these elevations, providing some textural changes. These are the south and east-facing elevations. They are the elevations that are facing the interior of the parcel into the parking area and are not as viewable from the streets. You'll see that the majority of these elevation is made up of metal paneling. However, the developer did provide stucco finishing along, on portions of the buildings as indicated in red here that are more viewable from the street. And the proposed fencing will also screen the majority, or a lot of the metal portion of the building from the street view as well. When reviewing site plan applications, there are four findings that have to be made in order to approve. The first finding is that requires that the project be allowed within the subject zone district. In this case, the project is an industrial and office, is an industrial warehousing and office use, which is allowed within the M1 zone district. Again, M1 is the light industrial zone district. Findings number two and three require that the project be in compliance with applicable provisions of the Development Code and any applicable design or designing guidelines, standards, policies, and zone districts. And after staff analysis, staff was able to determine that the project is in compliance with these. As for finding four, it requires that the general, the project be consistent with the general plan as well as any applicable specific plan. In this case, the underlying general plan designation for this property here is industrial, and again, which is consistent with the proposed project. The project staff was also able to determine that the project is in compliance with the Herden Shepherd's specific plan and light industrial standards and guidelines. And with that, SPR 202002 was approved by the director. Shortly after, staff received the request to appeal that approval, which is why we're here before you tonight. The appeal supplemental was received by the applicant's representative who is Dowling Aaron Incorporated, and I believe Andrew Slater here is, is here to represent the appellant. The applicants are Partners 425 LLC, Bearclaw Investment LLC, and Dan and Joey Properties LLC, all of which are property owners and business owners within this business park. The applicants are requesting that the planning commission revoke the planning division's approval of Site Plan Review 2020002 and require that the developer redesign the building to meet the applic- and require that the developer redesign the building to meet the applicable design standards. Their argument is that the proposed development does not meet the applicable design standards of our buildings within the Dry Creek Business Park. The appellants provided in their submittal, um, some citations from, for both the Herndon Shepherd's specific plan, um, as well as tract sixty-seven-seven, which established the Dry Creek Business Park. Uh, these are, um, citations related to design and architecture. I won't go over them as they were provided to you in staff's report, as well as in the appellant's submittal, which was attached to this staff's report. In response to the appeal request, staff would like to indicate that the architectural components of the Herndon Shepherd's specific plan and the N-tract map sixty-seven-seven are subjective criteria intended to be utilized as guidance and consideration during development review and are up to the discretion of the reviewer. Um, with that, staff has determined that the project has a contemporary architectural element, utilizing various materials, including metal paneling and metal awnings. The project also provides stone veneer skirting and attractive elevations facing the streets and on portions of the interior facing elevations that are viewable from the street. Additionally, um, the various materials, um, that include metal panels, metal awnings, stucco, and stone veneer, uh, provide for textual changes, uh, on the surface of the facades. Uh, the proposed building, although it's primarily made up of metal, is, it, it, it does incorporate stone veneer and stucco, similar to those existing buildings in the vicinity. And the building, um, is also made up of simple geometry and treated with, again, architectural components similar to that, to that of the existing developments in the Dry Creek Business Park. Um, the following slides include some photos, um, of existing buildings in the business park. Uh, this is a standalone office building located across the street, across Spruce, from the, um, project site. You'll see that, um, the majority of the material utilized here is stucco. Next to that, to the east, is, uh, another primarily off, uh, building utilized as, um, an office. However, they do have a construction component to this business. Uh, you'll see that the elements include stone veneer, stucco, and, uh, metal paneling for the roof and, uh, some wood. This building here is adjacent to the, uh, project site. It's an office and industrial building, um, utilized for construction. Uh, you'll see that there are some similar design elements here with the metal paneling and the stone veneer, as well as roll-up doors. This, uh, commission probably recognizes this building here from a condition of use permit request a couple of months ago. Again, uh, very similar architectural, uh, design elements here. This building is next to what you just saw. It's actually, um, a building that's all, made up of all metal. However, it does provide a very contemporary look with the metal awnings and its, uh, configuration. And to the north of that, again, um, another building that's very similar to what the, uh, to this project in question. And the color palette here is actually really as close to what, uh, the applicant is proposing for this SPR. And this is one of the four buildings that are under construction right now in this area. Uh, this, these buildings are proposed for office and warehousing use. They also have roll-up doors, and again, very similar architectural design. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission uphold the director's approval of SPR twenty-twenty zero-zero-two and deny the appeal request. This concludes my report, and I am open for questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for staff? Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Okay, seeing none, I'll open it up to the applicant. Can you push that third button on there so the light comes on?
Just, just for clarification, uh, we have both, uh, an applicant for the development project and the appellant. Uh, is it the, the traditional process is to invite the, uh, the proponent of the project, the developer, to speak, uh, first of the project?
Yes, sorry.
If I may. Commissioners, Harry Pascuzi, I'm a real estate attorney in Fresno, speaking on behalf of Keith forth, who's the owner of the entity, which is the applicant in this process. I think the problem here is not that the building that Keith is proposing is inappropriate for the area at all. The problem is the three buildings that the gentleman have built are, should be in a completely different zone. This is a industrial manufacturing M-one zone. All the other buildings that were shown were exactly like what Keith is proposing, which is very similar to any other developments around this area in an industrial manufacturing zone. So I don't think the problem is what Keith is proposing. I think the problem is that those three buildings were built in an area that they should not have been built in. And I'd like to say that there are two ways to protect yourself when you go to buy a piece of property and decide to build a, a building. One is the zoning, which we're here to talk about today. The other one is CC and arts, which are covenants, conditions, and restrictions, which private property owners can enforce to make sure other property owners don't violate the CC and arts. I don't know the last time I've seen a subdivision this large that does not have a set of CC and arts. There is no private protection, uh, for this subdivision in the form of CC and arts. So you take that risk when you buy a lot with no CC and arts. You also take a massive risk when you buy into an M-one area, which this is. Let me point out that in this zoning, there are nineteen uses that you cannot use or put to use in a CM zoning. This particular subdivision has thirty-six lots zoned M-one. It has ten lots zoned CM. Their uses should have been put in a CM zoning. An M-one zoning allows for a lumber mill, truck repair, overhaul, pet crematorium, freight terminal, all permitted. Also for chemical processing, concrete products, meatpacking, recycling facilities with a CUP. This is what you can do in an M-one zone. Uh, what Keith is proposing is far lower of a, uh, a use than what could be done in an M-one zone. There are seventy-nine lots, by my count, in the vicinity of this proposed project, which are CM. There are seventy-two lots, which are M-one. So the appelle, uh, the, uh, appellant could have easily bought into a CM zone. But I would submit that some of those buildings should be in an office building. I'd love to have them in my office building neighborhood. They are good-looking buildings. They are fantastic buildings, and I commend them for their building. But they just build them in the wrong place at the wrong time. I think Keith's building is a good-looking building, fits right in with the rest of the neighborhood, and should be approved. And I thank you for your time.
Good evening, commission. My name is Andy Slater. I am the attorney for the appellants in this matter. Um, and we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be heard. This is an issue that is extremely important to my clients, who are all occupants of the Dry Creek Business Park. Um, I trust that you have received my letter and, and reviewed it. My clients did also bring some additional photographs they would like the commission to have available while they speak tonight. Can I pass those around? With me here this evening, the principals of the appellant companies that would, that would frankly like to be heard. Um, they are very frustrated with what they perceive as being done to them out there in the business park and the fact that they were held to much higher standards of, of design than any of the more recent buildings are, and especially the building that's in question here tonight, which is the five sixty-one, uh, Dewitt proposed construction. Is it possible, uh, to get the elevations of that building put back up that, or at least the first one that you were displaying earlier? Cause I think it'll, I think it'll be important for the commission to be able to view some of the, uh, new photographs that we are passing out, as well as the ones we looked at a second ago, in contrast to what the proposed building for that site is. Um, I, I may also speak after my, uh, the principals of my clients speak, and I'm available for any questions the commission may have. And I can fill in any holes that my clients do not address. Just to address one of Mr. Pascuzi's points is that his, he's talking about zoning. And zoning and the design standards are two different things. The zoning concerns what you can use your property for. Regardless of zoning, the applicable design standards are what they are. Um, it is not affected by the zoning of these developments. Um, and again, with that, my, the principals of my clients would like to address the commission, uh, the first of which will be Kim Bethel.
Good evening. My name is Kim Bethel. If the, if the mask, uh, keeps you from hearing me, don't hesitate to tell me. We come here tonight, uh, to discuss this, this building that's being built. Much is made, in fact, um, let, this is a metal building. I mean, they can, it's a metal building. If you could go to my, to the Grizzly Construction Building on the screen, I'd appreciate it. That one, that's also a metal building. That's the one we own. In, in the appeal, much is made about the HSSP, the standards for this area being, well, subjective, and, uh, when you look at the specific items, um, the architectural components of the HSSP are subjective criteria and intended to be utilized as guidance and consideration during the development review. So, and it's, and it's the same answer to each of the issues, which tells me that, what's the purpose of the HSSP? The fact that the council, um, approved it based on the HSSP, it means something to me. I have my specific Development Review Committee comments. If I could pass those out? This meeting occurred on August thirtieth, two seven, two thousand seventeen, while we were in the design process. Notice the first thing I've highlighted there. The project shall be consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan and the Herndon Shepherd's specific plan. Anytime they reference the Herndon, the Herndon Shepherd's specific plan, their response has been, we can do anything we want, that's just guidance, and so forth. The next highlight I have there, now granted, this is the basis for the design of my building. And it's specific to my site. It's not some generic document. This is what we have to do to meet the criteria of the City of Clovis. Architecture shall have a contemporary appearance and match existing character of the surrounding buildings. Okay, the first four buildings in phase two were Russ Taylor. You can show that one. That's a very contemporary architect's office. Second was the Spanish style, uh, Santa Barbara style next door, which is R.L. Davidson's, uh, design. And third was Gateway Engineering. I was the fourth. No other buildings were built before us. Match existing character. If you look down the street in phase one of the Dry Creek Business Park, you will see nothing like a metal warehouse, nothing. Those are the first ones built. We started this dialogue when the first one was laid out and we realized what was going on. They're gonna build a metal warehouse across the street from everybody else's buildings. I have a picture looking out of my front door of my office and a picture looking across the street of the front door of my office. The complexion of the subdivision changed entirely when they started approving these buildings. To show you what, now here's another picture of the, uh... Probably more than the other appellants. I'm a, I'm a, the, the company that owns the, the building is an LLC that owns the building. We're underground contractors. We are an industrial user. We, we meet the definition of M-one, and we also meet the intent of the HSSP. We built a metal building that, um, do you have an extra one of my, uh, highlighted ones left over down there? The next highlighted item I have at the bottom of page, the first page, says, "Metal buildings should be discouraged and only allowed where the industrial nature of the use seems to mandate this type of construction. If metal buildings are found appropriate, the office portions of such structures shall be located on a portion of the site facing the public street and not be of metal construction. Those portions of metal buildings visible from the street or land uses other than industrial should have masonry skirting on walls and full fascia screened." The top of these buildings, when they put the, the Manfred-style roof metal around it, it's a dead giveaway that what you're looking at is a metal building. That, in addition to just straight walls. There's probably a hundred thousand dollars worth of wood framing on the front of that building to get away from that look. Because I'm meeting the intent of the HSSP and the Development Review Committee, which mandated how I build my building. Um, there's, there's a number of other issues. I, I just wanna, I, I want you to look at the way the city, and you don't have to do it now. I don't know if you, I don't know how much you've read this thing or not, whether you've read through the, our comments versus their responses. But they're all the same. It's all, well, we can do whatever we want. Apparently, the HSSP doesn't matter because it's all subjective and it's guidance. And my point is, this isn't guidance. This is what I was held to. And for that, I spent two, three hundred thousand dollars taking a metal building and making it better. Immediately thereafter, a whole bunch of metal buildings go up. Why am I held to one standard and another contractor, developer? Is it because he's bigger than me? What's the, I don't understand the logic of that. And it's really frustrating. I'm sorry if you hear that in my voice. But, um, with that, I will turn it over to Dan of Gateway Engineering. Dan Bond.
Good evening. Uh, I am one of the owners of the property at four oh five Park Creek Drive and, uh, part of Gateway Engineering. Daniel Bond. Sorry. So when we started growing as a company, we were looking for a location to expand to so it would allow us to, you know, grow our business. And we found this particular property. And I, I kinda wanted to address in that term the, the, um, uh, the attorney's comment that we are built in the wrong location. Maybe that's true. But what is also true is that the city told us that they were gonna hold this development to a higher standard, and they welcomed us in. We were told that there was, you know, the Herndon Shepherd's specific plan that would guide the, the development in this area and that we were a perfect match for what was proposed to come into this development in the future. So, my, my point is, is that we were looking for a home, and the City of Clovis sold us this home. And apparently sold us a bill of goods because we were told that this was an ideal location for what we had proposed. We were, you know, we went above and beyond. We spent, I think, our one point one million dollars just building our building, where I could have easily cut that number in half throwing up a sardine can like what's been allowed after us. The Herndon's specific plan has very specific guidelines. And those guidelines are not only written into the conditions of the tenant, of the, the map, tract sixty-seven-seven, which is the overriding document that established this entire development, but then it's, it's been conditioned on each of the individual, um, can, projects that have been conditioned throughout this process. Now, I'm an engineer. We are conditioned to comply with X, Y, Z, A, B, C on every project that comes to the door. And our development, or, excuse me, our building and every other building that has gone through here has been required to comply with the Herndon Shepherd's specific plan, which, as Kim stated, is, basically states, metal buildings are not the desired type of building. And if for any reason that is the only use or the only type of building that can be allowed, they are to be developed in a way that, one, avoids the look of a metal building but also conforms to the, the buildings in the area. As Kim stated, there are no other metal buildings in this area that look like what's been going up and what we've been talking to the City of Clovis about for the last two years, trying to get these projects to conform to what we were asked to conform to. Now, I chose to build this building because we were told a higher standard would be met. We were welcomed with open arms to build, you know, we were the first groundbreakers to move into this neighborhood and spend the money to make this a nice development. And as soon as we started seeing these sardine cans go up, we talked, we had multiple meetings with the mayor and with city manager and other folks within the city and we were, we got a lot of head nodding and, and said, yeah, we'll take care of this, we'll, and more and more and more buildings to a lesser and lesser standard continued to go up. And now that's why we're here today. Not because we don't want us to see a building built on that corner, but that build, that corner is the focal point. Now, it's our last stand. Every building that's gone up out there is, has gone to a lesser and lesser standard and that corner building is now the focal point as you come into our neighborhood. If we get another, you know, boxed metal building that's not complying with the Herndon Shepherd's specific plan and the requirements of it, it's going to just ultimately, you know, drive that last nail in our coffin and our, our ultimate values. Again, we're, we're all spending $200 a foot or more, million dollar plus for our buildings and they're, we're allowing these simple tin can buildings to go up with no complexity, very, I, I have to, you know, take, take, I don't want to say offense, but the, the description of the, all the textural additives going on to these metal buildings, those mean nothing. They're, they're a box with a few different colors and textures put on the outside of them. It does not make them fit the Herndon's specific plan or look like anything else that's out there. A box is a box. We have done so much to make our buildings look good, look contemporary, meet the specific plan and do something right for the City of Clovis. And since then, we, you know, we feel like our, the City of Clovis has turned their back on what we were told was going to happen. And we're just simply asking that this specific project be stopped and rethought through and done in a way that is consistent with what we've been asked to do. That's all this is about. Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Bob Davidson, R.L. Davidson, to continue on.
Thank you, Daniel. As he said, I'm Robert L. Davidson. I'm the owner of Lot Three, which is known as Partners 425. Shouldn't be said that, and as Dan said, I am an architect and I am the architect involved in your butterfly gardens as well and I think you folks know that. I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to tie it all together and, and add a couple of more salient points here, but one of the things that I have to do as an architect, every project we start, we, we go through a process called due diligence. This being my own project and, and being close to Dan Bond, he's been doing our civil work for maybe 10 to 12 years now. This was a huge investment for me. To make sure that our investment was solid, I, I visited City Hall, talked to Dwight Crowell, Brian Araki on two or three occasions and went over the zoning and at first was told, no, we're not going to allow an office building out there because it's zoned M1. However, they'd spent $300,000 to $400,000 building the monument sign on Herndon Avenue that says, "Business Park." Doesn't say industrial park. Now, either somebody doesn't understand the King's English or doesn't understand anything because you, you don't call something a business park and then strictly leave it to an industrial zone. I was assured, I was told twice by Brian Araki, that they were going, it was too cumbersome, too cumbersome with all the time he has on his hands to modify the zoning from M1 to a CM zone. He did assure me the project would be the jewel of the, the new center of Clovis, which is right there. And so, we proceeded based on what he told us was going to happen to go ahead and invest. Russ Taylor's building was the, the first building out of the ground and as you know, it's a contemporary building and then I was second and I chose to do a Santa Barbara Mission. Dan wanted more of a Tuscan style on his building and Kim wanted a Texas ranch. We were the only buildings out there. It was all raw property. There, there was no precedent that allowed metal buildings after us and the, the site plan reviews for all of us said, "The building shall conform to the surrounding environment." We became the surrounding environment, period. There's no other way to look at it. And we then, later on, the, the fifth building to come out of the ground was the Tool Building and it, and I'm sure that you've all seen it and it's a long box that, that backs up to, to Kim and it faces on to the other street, which is the continuation of Park Creek Drive. We protested and we got ahold of Sean. Sean's well aware of all this. The building was allowed to go forward without even building permits. We had to notify staff that the building's illegal, okay? They had to red tag them. They finally pulled permits and it went on. It went on and on and, and it didn't meet any of the conditions that were prescribed in the site plan reviews. So, we then took upon ourselves to arrange meetings with, with staff and I had gone back down to visit Brian Araki again and, and talked to him and I got nowhere. And I sent him a memo. I have copies of it if you folks are able to handle copies, but, and, and asked him, "Why are you allowing these," as Dan said, "tin can buildings to be built that are in violation of everything that you have written in the HSSP and in the site plan reviews?" And Brian's emailed back to me and says, "Bob, the area is zoned M1, which is light manufacturing." Yes, the sign states, "Business Park," and he's referring to Herndon Avenue here, "as the intent was to attract more business park users such as yourself and some of the others that have chosen to develop there." Basically, this is the bait and switch. They were trying to enhance the neighborhood by, by luring in people, guaranteeing us that we would be protected by staff and the language of the, the HSSP and site plan reviews to maintain a high quality development. And it didn't happen. And then one after the other happened down the block. And it continues today and as Dan said, the building proposed by Mr. Corrigan is the focal point as you come down Park Creek Drive. This, this business park, as it says on Herndon Avenue, because staff didn't have the time or the will to change it to a CM zone, has deteriorated into what they told me, and this is from Dwight Crowell, that he did not want the, this to look like Body Shop Row on Barstow Avenue. And that is exactly what you have out there today if you've been out to, to, to visit. The other, the, the last point that I want to talk about is staff's response to our letter of appeal is based on the fact that they think that the word "should" should be interpreted to allow staff to do basically at will what they want. And they're claiming in here, and their, their pages aren't numbered, but they keep, it is very repetitive that they are only guidelines to build out that, that park out there. And it, it should be pointed out, the, the word "should" that comes out of the HSSP, the, the document, the resolution that went with the council, said that the project shall be developed in accordance with the guidelines set forth in the HSSP. The language of the HSSP is that it says "should." It, it, "Large buildings should have façades that include variations in form and texture." Mr. Corrigan's building has no variation in form. It has a simple texture change. "Large continuous surface treatments of a single material should be, should be minimized." Building construction and design should, should be used to create a structure with substantially equally attractive sides of high quality. Metal buildings should be discouraged and only allowed where the industrial nature of the use seems to mandate this type of construction. If metal buildings, I'm getting dry mouth here from the mask, sorry. If metal buildings are found appropriate, the office portions of the structures should be located on the portion of the site facing the public street and not be of metal construction. Now, staff's hanging their hat, and I'm sure the city attorney too, on the, on the, the word "should." They are viewing the word "should" as something that they can skip around and it is not a mandate. The fact of the matter is that if you go to the dictionary, any one, Webster's, Oxford, I don't care. And Sean, if I could pass this around? The definition of "should," which according to staff and the city attorney, I'm sure, means they should, they should be unbridled in their interpretation of what happens out there and, and it is not a fact. The word "should," as you can see here, which is downloaded this afternoon, it is, the word "should" is simple past tense of "shall" and it also, on item three, means must or ought to. Okay? And if you're wondering what past tense of "shall" means, past tense of "shall" is the way you would politely talk to your child. "You should go clean your room right now." And that's basically, "You shall or you better do it." Okay? So, these people are playing with our lives and our livelihood and parsing words playing semantics. And as, as Kim said, he's probably got $300,000 to $400,000 extra in his building and I designed it. Dan's got the same and I do too. We could have built a simple, like Dan said, tin can out here and saved ourselves $300,000 or $400,000. But your staff, Brian Araki and Dwight Crowell, told us that they wanted us to be the jewel of the new downtown area. It's where the, the freeway dumps out, right there. Your city manager said that to us. This is the center of everything and then he went sideways on it. So, what, what Dan said is true. We, we are asking you today to deny the building design that you have in front of you on that lot and give them an opportunity to come back with something decent. Now, I've, I've talked to Keith Wirth, the owner privately and I told him that we'd be willing to help him on his building design. Kim Bethel's building, from the east side of the Gable Inn to the west side of the building, is a metal building. It is a metal building. In fact, Dwight Crowell, one of the meetings we had with Bob Whalen, who came out and we took Dwight out there and he didn't believe that Kim's building was a metal building. And I took, I took Dwight inside the building and he stood inside the shop area in the back and he said, "I can't believe this. This is really a metal building." It is a metal building with some thought and adherence to the guidelines that are expressed in our individual site plan reviews and outlined for, for the King's English in the HSSP. And with that, I want to reiterate our request to deny this man the ability to move forward with that building design and come back with something more appropriate that fits in with the neighborhood as it was intended regardless of the, excuse the word, junk that was allowed to be built with the Tool Building going east. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Just to, to bring it all to a close, whether anyone likes it or not, the applicable architectural design standards are there, they're in place, they need to be followed. My clients were obligated to follow them. It's not discretionary language, it's mandatory language. And it's my clients and the buildings like them that should be there frankly and not the metal box buildings. And with that, I will submit it and we're available for any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions? Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any questions for the applicant or the appellant?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you. I'll now open it up to the public for anyone...
Mr. Pascucci, you should be allowed for any rebuttal that he may have.
Okay. I was waiting for rebuttal after we opened it, but we'll do it now.
Thank you. I've got some maps to pass around that kind of came up. These are color, uh, scenery, uh, CM, I'm sorry. The CM and the M1 lots in the area.
Thank you.
The pink, I'll wait till they're passed out. The pink are the CM lots. The very faint white are the M1 lots and you can see most of the areas are M1. So, the, the nice buildings that one of the gentlemen was referring to, as there being a lot of these nice buildings, is actually the CM zone to the left of the green square, which is my client's property. So, yes, there are other nice buildings in the area similar to these three gentleman's buildings, but they're in the CM zone that you, you get before you arrive at the, the predominantly M1 property. I feel their pain. I think they have a problem with the City of Clovis. I think they should have made their stand when the first person wanted to put up a metal building, but the fact of the matter is there's plenty of metal buildings out there right now and when Mr. Corrigan buys his lot and looks around, he is building a building that is the same and conducive just like those other buildings that are in the M1 zone. So, I think the standard has changed from the day there may have been three very nice home-like structures out there, but to, to pick the fourth, fifth, sixth person to come along and say, "We want to stop that project," is patently unfair to Mr. Corrigan, who is trying to build a building that is very nice for a CM, for an industrial zone. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll tell you what embarrassment is, is when you leave your office and leave your black face mask at the office and have to grab your grandson's survivor's face mask to come in here and address the commission.
Okay, I'll now open it up for anyone here who wishes to speak in favor. Ray, do you have anyone online?
None.
Okay. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Okay. I will close the public portion and bring it back. Do any of the commissioners have any comments, concerns, questions?
I have a question for staff. When was this actual design and property and everything approved?
Are you referring to this project?
Yes, this project. When was it approved?
The project in question was approved on June 3rd.
This year?
Yes.
They, they were not before the city, any time before that?
Um, no.
Okay. And then the second thing then, this, this is on an M1 lot versus a CM lot, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And they fall basically, they fall under different type of design rules in the past?
Yes, in the past.
That's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
I guess for a little more clarification, the, the plans for the building came up on June 3rd for planning, correct?
It was approved on June 3rd. It was received the month prior for review.
Okay, the purchase of the lot was, and how long ago was that, do you know?
When the applicant, when the applicant purchased this lot?
Yes.
I don't have that information.
Okay, uh, the reason is I was concerned is, is whether there was any changes in plans from the initial purchase of the property to today on it.
Right. I don't, I don't know, I have no idea when the applicant purchased that property and how long they have owned it.
Okay, thank you.
Lili, I do have a follow-up question. The appellate did mention that they were opposed to the first building that initially went up in, that has the same structure. There are several buildings now built out there. Have, has there been an appeal to any of those designs in the past, or is this the first one?
This is our first appeal in this business park.
Thank you.
You have comments? Um, no, that's okay, go ahead.
If I can, the, the salient point here, the, the question asked by Commissioner Hinkle, you're asking if our buildings are built on the, the CM property and the others are built on the M1 property, that is correct. However, there's no distinction to the Dry Creek Business Park as it is defined in the HSSP. We all fall under the same guidelines. So, it, it's not okay to build the tin can building that we've seen built out there as opposed to our buildings that we tried to upscale the, um, neighborhood with. That is not true. We all are under the same guidelines. And the word "should," of, of, of all those requirements of the facades, of the breakup, the articulation of the, the buildings, a high-quality development, everything for the M1 and the C1 falls under the same guidelines, the same language in the King's English as defined by Webster's or Oxford. And, and there is no distinction between what's all out across the street versus the other side of the street.
Until we entered into essentially a little agreement with the city attorney, my clients nor any of the other occupants of that development were notified of any approvals of site plans prior to them being approved. So, there was no opportunity to appeal other than to the developers that were actually trying to develop the property. After we were, when we were notified of this project, which is the first one we were actually notified at this stage, we did appeal, and there was actually a $2,400 cost to appeal this, so we were out of pocket $2,400 to be here tonight. But this is the first opportunity that we've had to appeal at this stage or that we're notified of at this stage. And just to clarify Mr. Davidson's point, is that the applicable, we're talking about aesthetics, not use, when you talk about zoning. So, the zoning doesn't matter in terms of what's the applicable architectural design standard. That standard is set in the HSSP, which covers all zoning within that area. Those were the two points.
And if I could add one more point, if I could. Regarding this, the, the, the building that we're here for tonight is our first appeal. But you have to understand that this is, this is July of 2020. We began calling Shaun Smith, Dwight Crowell, Brian Araki, who then put us in contact with Mayor Whalen at the time. We met with the city manager, Bob Whalen, Dwight Crowell, and Andy Hausler. We had two meetings here at City Hall, one at my office because the mayor had never been to the business park and didn't know what we were complaining about. So, we, we, we did the proper reach, outreach. We, we tried to talk to everybody. We explained. We had pictures. We had everything. At the second meeting at City Hall, I finally, I, I was sitting across from Bob Whalen and I said, "You haven't been there, have you?" He said, "Well, I run, run by there in the morning. It was dark." And I said, "Okay, enough." We had them over for lunch, and they finally saw what we were talking about. And they assured us that they would not let anything go forward further like that. Dwight Crowell, everybody, "We understand the problem, Bob. We're going to make sure that we, we move this thing up to a higher level." Well, in, in, in the nine months, 10 months it took us to go through the three or four meetings with the mayor and the city manager, they were letting these projects come out of the barn. And so, we have the, the tool building and, and then two or three going east all the way down to the, um, the folks at the end of the block there, the, the Beal, Beal family. And, you know, you don't have to be a genius to figure out, when you drive in, the buildings are ugly and they're cheap. And it's not what the city of Clovis wanted, nor did they tell us they would, would approve anything like that. They wanted a higher-quality development. We're basically in the new center of Clovis. I've been here most of my life. I went to Clovis High in 67. I came back, um, from, from college, but, um, you know, we're, we're trying to be good neighbors. But at the same time, we feel that we are really being, taken advantage of here. And we have been taken advantage of, and Brian Araki's email indicates that. They used us as the linchpin to bring in other projects. That's, that's not right.
Can I ask you a question? When did you have that meeting where you said that staff and city council told you that they were going to address that? When was that meeting held? Time-wise?
February, uh, 18, 19? Pardon what? Okay, so, the, the, the final meeting with Whalen in, in the summer of 19. So, we started in January, I think, of 19, maybe even in 18, late 18. A long time ago, before a lot of these things were done, done and approved. We were trying to stop it. And thus, the reason that we didn't appeal anything is we thought we were making headway with everybody. Everybody's telling us, "You're right, you're right. We understand, we understand, we understand," and then nothing. In fact, we had a meeting with another member of council and to bring them up to speed, since you guys had rotated, um, mayors. And the current mayor was unaware of any of the meetings we've had with the ex-mayor or the city manager. So, there's obviously a huge chasm between our good efforts and it being transferred into action at the planning level and even the information being passed on to other, other members of the council and the new, new mayor.
Do you guys have any other questions?
So, you feel just because the mayor told you there would be a change, that there was going to be a change?
Well, you have it coming from the mayor and the city manager and the head of your planning department. We, you know, we're honest people, and we believe that people are being honest back to us. Yeah, we, we,
How many votes do those people have in the decision-making of that process?
Of what process?
Of making the changes. When this comes up front of council, there's five people. Okay, if you talk to 10 people in planning and through city, they don't have the votes that make that actual decision, okay? So, people can tell you anything they want, but it's what actually happens in the decision process, okay? Now, there's a lot of things I'd like to see different in Clovis, but I don't really have a say in, in that. All I can do is voice my opinion, as you have tonight on it. And I, I think that something needs to be considered, is that, yeah, they're not, I'd like to see change. But the actual change process is all five of those council members making that change. And you may have four of them that said, "I agree with you." And you may have four of them that say, "No, I don't agree with you." So, that's where the real process comes down in what happens. And driving through this area, I drive through there many a times, is that the area has, as you say, 10 buildings. To go through now and say on an M1, which is a different type of business than what you're in, that you've got to go through and have the same type of buildings as the, uh, CM development has.
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Well, you're insinuating that, that they should meet what you have.
No, I'm not insinuating anything. What I'm telling you is the language of the SSP, HSSP, is specific and gives staff guidelines that they are bound to. And your staff did not bind themselves to the language of the HSSP beyond Kim Bethel's building, is what I'm telling you. Everything was dropped after that. The language is the language which staff is trying to change tonight to give them universal ability to do anything they want, which means there's no reason to have an HSSP, if that's true. And there's no reason to have a planning commission, if that's true. I don't believe it is.
This needs to debate.
Thank you. I'm done.
If, if it's going to be repetitive, then, okay, one quick thing, because we've closed the public portion.
I just wanted to address the last comment made about not talking to the city council and the vote makers or the voters involved here. Folks we talked to, the city council already voted to approve the HSSP. They already voted to approve the tract map that is the basis for our development, sorry. The council is done. They've already made their edict. They've already stated the HSSP is approved and important. They approved the tract map that said the HSSP is important. We talked to the mayor, the head of the planning department, you know, everybody involved who are then to direct staff to follow the guidelines established by the city council. We didn't need to get the city council involved again. They've already made their edict. We needed to get staff at the city level to follow what they were supposed to do, what council had already told them to do. That's my point, and I thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. Regardless of what our, what our vote is tonight, does this go on to city council?
No, this, this appeal would be decided this evening by the planning commission. And if either party chooses to take that to the city council, they would have to appeal this decision, which is another process.
So, they can appeal, whatever the decision is, that can be appealed to city council?
Correct.
Okay. And so, just for our clarification, can you explain to me a little bit better why this is the first time they've had the ability to appeal something? If all of these other buildings have been built in the interim?
Yeah, the, I don't know that I agree with the terminology that they used in terms of this being the first time that they've had the opportunity to appeal. The municipal code has always allowed the opportunity to appeal. They may not have known at the time that the projects were being approved that, that the approval period had, the approval had occurred and the appeal period was, was underway. To my knowledge, they, they had not previously requested to be notified of those approvals, and so they did not previously know about them as they were occurring.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question for staff. In reading the Herndon Plan and stuff, my understanding is staff has the power to do what they feel will work within that plan. Is that correct?
As it relates to these, these design guidelines, I, I think your statement is, is accurate. They, they are encouragement statements and guiding statements. They're very subjective. Staff is, is empowered to interpret those, those requirements and implement as it sees fit. And I might implement them different than, than Lili might, and Ricky might implement them different than either one of, either one of us. But it is, staff is empowered to implement them. To the degree that they are subjective means that you're going to get uneven results and considerations on what the original intent was.
So, it's a pretty open guideline.
The, the guidelines in the Herndon Shepherd's specific plan are, are as you read them. They are, they are fairly vague and they are should statements.
Thank you.
Dave, I have a question. The appellate states that this is the first time that they were notified prior to a building being approved. Is the notification for industrial buildings different than it is for residential? Meaning typically when the, we are, a developer is in the process of building something, neighborhoods typically are notified, the surrounding neighbors. Is that not the case in this instance?
The site plan review process is the process that we use to approve non-residential projects. The municipal code does not require notification to surrounding properties as part of the site plan review process. There, and I'll have the city attorney explain it in further detail if necessary. But we did, we were engaged in a, in a process specific to the Dry Creek subdivision and the site plan reviews in here. And through that, that process, we agreed to provide specific notice upon approval of a site plan review in this area to the, to the parties that are involved with the appeal.
Thank you. Well, I'm a little perplexed and disturbed that it seems that for the final, or for what seems to be the final building, this is now becoming an issue and, and coming before us as an appeal, if there's been so many other buildings that have been built using the Herndon Shepherd's specific plan. I've always viewed them, like you said, as, as a, as a guiding direction, not, you know, has to be done, not should, but it's, this is what it kind of should look like. We'd like you to conform. We see that a lot. I've, I've never, in all my years up here, had an appeal like this in our commercial or light industrial. I, I feel badly for you that it's gone this long and it seems like there hasn't been any resolution for you. Honestly, sitting up here as a commissioner, I've never heard that you guys have brought this forward. It's never come to us before, obviously, as an issue. So, it's disconcerting to me that you guys have gone on and on and it seems like you haven't felt like there's been any sort of resolution on your side. But I do believe that the Herndon Shepherd's specific plan is a guidance and that there is a lot of interpretation to that. The, the site plan review and the building that I see before us tonight looks just like a lot of the other buildings there. It may not look like your guys' first, first three or four that are, have a lot more detail to them, but it does look like the rest of what's in that area. I don't, I don't believe or feel like we should rescind their approval to go forward with their building just because they're the last building that's there, which is kind of what I got from you guys, is they're the last building, so therefore we're appealing it now. I don't think that's fair to the applicant to be denied just because he is the last building that's going out there. I think his building does fall under the guidelines, and as such, I would have no problem going forward with his building as it is now.
First of all, let me say that the three appellants, your buildings are beautiful. I've been out several times into your, um, site. I've driven it, I, I too, I've driven it prior to anyone being built out there. It was strictly land because we had an issue with another proposed parcel that didn't go through. So, I've seen it. For me, it's a simple matter of zoning. You reside in the CM zone and you have beautiful structures. There's another architectural firm that's also there, the Taylor Group, I believe. They have a beautiful structure. I depart from your opinion, and I have my own, in that the manufacturer side, I don't view as ugly. I, I've, I've seen other industrial uses that are, um, have less amenities to them than these do. I, I view them as compatible and a goo, a good mix for that particular site. I've looked at the general plan and the specific plan, and I see a lot of "shoulds" and "may." And we all know, I hope, that in a legal sense, those are permissive. May and should are permissive. May and should are permissive. Must and shall are mandatory. The only shall I saw was that the building should be of simple geometric design, and I believe these are. So to go with the appellants tonight, to further their intent, is we should go back to the people that have already built in there and say, you've got to change your design. And I don't think that's fair, and I don't think it's proper. And if we're all done, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes, sir.
This is Brandon. I'd just like to make a couple remarks before we make a motion.
Certainly.
So I would say, bottom line upfront, I'm not a lawyer, but like you, should, in the legal context denotes a recommendation or something of which is advised, but not necessarily required. And while I do, I think we all can see the disparity in the building designs. There's clearly some subjectivity and discretion in the language of the HSSP guidelines. So to that end, the building that's currently under appeal seemingly conforms more with the majority of the buildings that have since been built, rather than these original three or four. I think like others must admit that through all of the meetings and the written correspondence with city staff and council, I do find it disappointing that the vehicle to submit an appeal was not utilized much earlier in the process, as was suggested. Again, I'm not sure why that was. Sounds like there's various positions around that. But as the zoning allows for, and with this subjectivity in the should statements, and the discretion of city staff having for the site plan review, I do see this project as conforming and would support it moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Betstead.
Ready for motion? I'll make a motion that the planning commission deny the appeal and approve the project consistent with SPR 2020-002.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, second by Commissioner Hinkle, to deny the appeal. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Betstead?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Moving on to item four, consider approval SPR 2018-005A2. A request to consider an appeal of the site plan review denial for an additional access point on Willow Avenue for a previously approved commercial center located at the northeast corner of Willow and Aluvial Avenue. El Centro Corner Petroleum LLC owner applicant. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Hatcher. Commissioners, this, item four here is the request to appeal the denial of site plan review 2018-005A2. The site plan review requested, is requesting a secondary access point onto Willow Avenue for an approved commercial center at the northeast corner of Willow and Aluvial Avenue. The commercial center, the site plan for the commercial center that was approved is what you see here in this exhibit, with the exception of the secondary, proposed secondary access point. This project was approved with SPR 2018-005, and then later on amended with minor amendments with SPR 2018-005A. The applicant has returned with another amendment request, requesting the secondary access point you see here in red. The commercial center was approved with a shared access point onto Willow Avenue. This access point is shared with the Daryl's Mini Storage located to the north. The commercial center also has an access point approved on Aluvial Avenue, as indicated, let's see if I can make this work, in this area right here. This is just an aerial, so you have an idea of how this shared access point looked like. It's that Daryl's Mini Storage to the north. As indicated in the earlier item, there are four findings that are required to be made with SPR approval. After review, staff was able to make findings one and four. Commercial projects are permitted in the C2 Zone District and the general plans underlying community commercial zone district. However, findings two and three, staff was unable to make because the proposed access point deviates from an existing agreement that the city has with the city of Fresno for the Willow Avenue corridor. With that, SPR 2018-005 was denied by the director. Shortly after the denial, the applicant, who's also the appellant of the commercial center, requested, requested to appeal the director's denial. They are represented by, they are El Centro Corner Petroleum LLC and represented by Fred Minigar. They're requesting that the planning commission appeal the denial of SPR 2018-005A2 for further The reasons for the appellants' request to appeal the denial is that they indicate that land use has changed from residential to commercial since the development of the access plan. The restriction of access driveways may cause traffic congestion with the limited two access points for the commercial project. Limited access points may cause difficulty for field delivery trucks when navigating through the sites, through the site, and limited access points may cause delays in emergency situations. They also provided and quoted from their traffic study that the proposed secondary access point will not have adverse traffic impact on any signalized and unsignalized intersection capacity and operations. It will also improve the lack of dire access to the site and decrease the delay on the existing driveway on Willow Avenue. In response to this appeal, staff would like to point out that at the time when the property was being re-designated from residential to commercial, it was determined that the existing shared access point onto Willow Avenue is sufficient even for commercial use. Also during that time, the commercial project was being evaluated with the multifamily project to its east with a shared emergency access along the north end of both properties onto Willow Avenue, and both fire and police departments found that that was adequate. The proposed secondary access point onto Willow also conflicts with the jointly developed Willow Avenue corridor access plan developed by the city of Clovis and Fresno. And additionally, the city engineer is responsible for reviewing and making determinations for proposed access points for development. The municipal code gives the city engineer the discretion to utilize his professional judgment to make determinations related to driveways and site access spacing and control. In this case, the city engineer has determined that the secondary access point should not be approved, and that the agreement with Fresno should be upheld. With that, I have Sean Smith from the city engineering division to further elaborate on the Willow, the agreement, as well as the traffic report that was provided by the applicant or the appellant.
Good evening, Commissioner. Sean Smith, supervising civil engineer on behalf of the city engineer. Just want to give you a little brief history of the Fresno and Clovis agreement. So the graphic that you have on the screen before you represents the agreement graphically. It starts at Willow and Herndon, and the north limits are Willow and Copper. And back in 2001, the cities collaborated to agree to limit median turnpockets and access points along Willow between Herndon and Copper. Lily, if you could go to the next slide for me, please. This just zooms in on the site. There's a lot of colors and a lot going on in the previous exhibit, so just want to show you this specifically. So the, you see the purple circle, that's roughly where the second Willow access is being requested in the yellow-colored property. It represented residential development back in 2005 when this graphic was put together. Okay, then the agencies collaborated because they realized the importance of the Willow corridor, and they desired to deserve both its safety and its efficiency. Since it was put into place in '01, there's been many entitlements along this corridor that have been submitted, reviewed, and approved in conformance with that 2001 agreement. There's also been several entitlements that have been submitted to each agency, Fresno and Clovis, requesting to deviate from that agreement. And recently, there were two, one in Fresno and one in Clovis, a Fresno apartment project in 2005 and a Clovis car wash in 2015 that requested consideration. Both were denied, and the agreement honored. The reasonings that they provided were very similar to what you have tonight. And I'd just like to point out to you, one of the statements is that the access should be reevaluated as each application comes in, and specifically, and importantly, when land use changes, and that that is something that has happened, that occurs with each application. They are reviewed on their own merit, with access being one issue considered and regardless of land use. You will notice that as far as land use goes, this site did change from residential to commercial, and at that point, access was evaluated. One access point on Aluvial, a second on Willow, and it was deemed to be sufficient for that project. When this application came in to appeal for the second Willow access, Clovis contacted Fresno staff, and they are not in support of deviating from the 2001 agreement. So there's a lot more technical aspects to the application that I'd be willing to go over with you if you want. I just wanted to give you a high-level summary of that original agreement. And based on that, staff recommends the planning commission honor the agreement made between the two cities and deny this appeal. Available for any questions. Lily might have more, too.
I don't. Thank you, Sean. You closed it out for me. Yes, Sean's correct, in that staff's recommending that the planning commission uphold the director's denial of the site plan review and deny this appeal request.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Betstead, do you have any questions of staff?
Um, yes, I actually do. So Sean, can, I know you're showing us here that these two more recent access requests were denied, but how many have been, as variances? And all, the caveat there, that I think all of us understand that these variances can be a slippery slope, particularly because the accumulation of those variants over, variances over time may impede the flow of traffic or create an unsafe situation. But just from purely a factual and data standpoint, do you have that information to tell us how many have been approved in both Clovis and Fresno?
I don't have the total count, but the applicant did correctly identify several in his report that either varied from various requirements, such as spacing from a signal or other items like that. I believe he mentioned four or five in the traffic study. I can't remember exactly, but, and I did forget to point out to you on this graphic that's on the screen right now, there is a misplacement of an arrow that I just kind of want to point out to you. In the square on the left, you'll see a right in, a right out, and then what looks like to be a left turn that's allowed within that box. The left arrow should be a little bit further to the south where there actually is a turnpocket, but that box is approximately where the Fresno site was seeking a left turn, and in '05 was denied. Commissioner Betstead, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I guess just kind of one follow-on. So the number is obviously greater than zero. Have any of those variances been problematic?
Not to date, no.
And I guess last question, were any of them similarly evaluated with traffic studies that would indicate that said variance would be negligible? Or were they overwhelmingly no impact whatsoever?
I'm sorry, I can't, I don't know. I didn't research that before tonight. I would assume a fair amount of work went into each to evaluate for access for porosity circulation, for traffic safety, and issues like that. But that is an assumption.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess just for the record, I'm, while I like to understand precedent, I'm not necessarily always convinced that something we did in the past is something that we should continue to do in the future, but that's why I ask for the data, so that we can objectively evaluate these. Thank you, Sean.
Any other questions? Okay. Is the applicant or appellant here?
Yes, we have Tony Maryhugh on the line. Tony, you have been admitted.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Tony Maryhugh. I'm the CFO for the property owner, and I apologize that we were unable to attend in person today, but I appreciate that we can present our request to you virtually. I understand it's been a long night for all of you already. I want to be respectful of your time, but this is very important to us, which is why we're here with an appeal. I want to start by just sharing a little bit about our company, and more specifically, the company founders, Mr. and Mrs. Shandee. They may be new to your city, but they're putting down roots. So Mr. and Mrs. Shandee are both immigrants to the USA. They've worked very hard to achieve their American dream, started with the ownership of a single gas station business. And over the time, they've developed a successful business model, and they're expanding the company to develop business locations that their family can own and operate and build their own futures. They're currently in escrow to purchase a home in the city of Clovis. It'll be a base for their family and their business operations in Clovis and the nearby city of Fresno. There's more development that they're looking to do. This site, I share that with you just so that you understand who they are, who we are, and that Mr. and Mrs. Shandee have a commitment to the area. So I want you to understand that. Since the time we acquired the site, which was already entitled by a previous developer, we've been looking for options to make the site more efficient for our proposed uses. The gas stations that Mr. Shandee owns and operates typically are pretty high volume. We have the ability to attract national brand co-tenants to come to the site with us. We expect this site to be no different. We've had a lot of interest in the site. But one area that we identified early on that's critical is the need for this additional driveway off of Willow Avenue. We've made several requests on a couple of different occasions. We've brought it up with staff. Each time, they've basically said it's not an option, and more or less referenced the agreement with the city of Fresno as the primary reason. We have continued to work with some potential tenants and our Arco brand on the site, and we keep getting a lot of pushback that the site has limited access. The concerns are that the driveways in and out will become backed up with traffic coming in and out. I don't know how many of you ever shop at a Costco for gas and have to get waiting out in the street sometimes. We don't want to see that happen. I know that I have a tendency, when I'm driving by a site, if it looks too complicated to get in and out, to just drive right on by. And our goal is to have successful business operations in the center, both for us, for our tenants, and for the residents that want to come and use the amenities at the site. One of the other areas of concern that we have is that the north driveway on Willow, the one that's shared with the mini storage, it's shared and limits access with their customers, our customers, and also potentially, in an emergency situation, that driveway is supposed to be the emergency vehicle access to the housing center that is adjacent to us. And that housing center only has one driveway off- And that housing center only has one driveway off of Olivio. So if there were some kind of true emergency situation, it could be disastrous. When we went back again to staff another time, and I can't, lost count of the number of times, but when we've gone back to them again, we've asked about the access point, and they've brought up this corridor again, the agreement with Fresno. And the concerns were that this is a safety and efficiency of the corridor, that that's why this agreement was first put into place. As Mr. Smith mentioned earlier today, this was put into place back in two thousand and one. It was originally drafted. A lot of things have changed since then, not just the land uses, but just vehicular traffic in general. Appreciating that it was a safety and efficiency matter, we elected to go out and engage the services of an independent and objective traffic consultant, an expert consultant, to go in and do his own conclusions on what the site would look like with this driveway. And he's here to speak to that today. I know that the other reasons that we have for the driveway are outlined in the letter, which is shared in the packet, so I know you can see that for yourself. We have started construction on the site. If any of you have driven by there, you can see that. We've done that in good faith. Mr. Shandee is committed to building the site. But what we want to do is make sure that it is accessible, that customers can get in and out, that our vendors, that delivery drivers, that safety is a factor and important. We're hoping in good faith that you will understand and look at this tonight, that this is an opportunity to maybe update that corridor plan. And like I said, the traffic engineer will speak to the fact of the, his research has indicated some findings, and I'm going to let him speak to that. So I would like to reserve the right, though, to have a wrap-up comment after he finishes. But we have Fred Minigar on the line, and I'll let Fred introduce himself if the host can recognize him and unmute him, please. Thank you.
Fred, you are now being unmuted.
Can you see me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, you can just hear me. You cannot see me. I just wanted to make sure, because we have that capabilities in our office. Good evening, Madam Chair Hatcher, Chair Pro Tem Hinkle, and Planning Commissioners. It's a great pleasure for me to attend this PC meeting via WebEx. My name is Fred Minigar. I'm the project applicant's expert traffic engineering consultant. And in my job, we've been responsible for six hundred similar projects for eighty-five cities in the state of California. And when I'm not working on any projects, I'm a public servant leader at my home city in Orange County, and I serve as mayor pro tem, former mayor, and with twenty-three years of experience, ten years being chairman of the planning commission, and eight years being chairman of traffic and transportation commission to my home city. And I do get involved with a lot of litigation cases regarding access and regarding traffic and transportation in the great state of California. And I'm very proud of winning all the litigation cases when it comes down to discrepancies between a set policy versus traffic circulation. My discussion, my presentation, short to the point, this evening is based upon legal, technical, operational, and functional of the proposed action. On behalf of the project team, I respectfully disagree with the city's determination to deny this appeal. And I wanted to raise a couple of critical legal, technical issues. Number one, I listened to Commissioner Brandon Betts that said that he wanted to know about the conditions of other driveways and what has happened in the past. Well, I sent my registered civil engineer in the state of California to go to the city of Clovis to check all those existing driveways. And I have a news for you, which is stipulated on page, let's see, it's on page nineteen of our focused traffic assessment report. There are five existing driveways that are not in compliance and conformance of the city of Clovis's municipal code, section nine point three two zero eight zero B, regarding the distance from the closest intersection to the proposed main driveway to be two hundred and fifty feet or more. How come they are not in compliance? There is exception, there is exemption, there is deviation, there is discrimination. That's the way I look at it as an expert traffic engineer that I tackle all these cases all over the state of California. Exception, exemption, and deviation. So how come the city of Clovis as a municipal corporation approved those in light of having Willow Avenue access plan policy that was adopted by the two cities, city of Clovis, city of Fresno, back in two thousand and one? Our subject parcels were designated as residential back then. It is commercial. That land use is different. That policy is outdated, that was stipulated, adopted, ratified by two city councils back in two thousand and one. My client has purchased these two parcels with that understanding that he is going to have a commercial land use. That policy is in reference to residential for that specific set or that specific segment of the roadway. So number one, there are five other drivers not in compliance from legal, technical perspective. Number two, the policy that was adopted in two thousand and one was for a residential parcel or parcels. Now it is commercial. It's different. Third, we prepared our traffic engineering report, which I have attested, based on my personal honesty, integrity, and transparency. And I have, as an independent and objective evaluator of the situation, I have signed the report that this project is in full compliance from a traffic perspective. We are not impeding on the arterial flow of traffic on Willow. We are not impeding on the posted fifty miles per hour speed, which was the spirit of that policy that was drafted back in two thousand and one. I've read your policies. I've read the specific sections. Specific section, policy three point eight says, "Access management, minimize access points and curb cuts along arterials and prohibit them within two hundred feet of an intersection where possible." Well, I have news for you. Legally speaking, there are three other locations that happen to be in full violation of that policy. How come my applicant, my client, is getting rejected because of the request? Birch Avenue and Willow Avenue is the exception. Willow Station, Northeast Drive at Willow, is another exception that the city of Clovis and the city of Fresno have approved. And third, Parkway Trail, Southeast Drive. What about Target Plaza? What about Honda Dealership? They are not in compliance and conformance. So how come this applicant cannot proceed with having a main driveway? We've done computer modeling. We've done computer simulation. It's all well documented in any court of law. I can defend them. Computer simulation clearly shows that, with a ninety-five percent confidence level, that this proposed request for a new driveway on Willow would not have any adverse impact on traffic on Willow, nor on adjacent signalized intersections. So from a traffic perspective, this project doesn't create any impact. All level of service A, B, C, according to your own policies on your general plan. Beyond that, I asked my staff, which I have legal, technical documents. We did computer modeling this morning for the year twenty forty, twenty years from now. Those four locations would not have any adverse impact on traffic, meaning level of service would be A, B, C, or D, not E, not F, that in the state of California, which is the same as federal, are in non-compliance. So the future twenty forty, this project with the entire elements of its action plan would not have any impact. So the policy was created to reduce, to eliminate, to minimize. This project doesn't have any of those. The driveway that we are proposing is beyond the threshold of the city of Clovis that I mentioned earlier. It's beyond the section, your municipal code, section nine point three two point zero eight zero B. We are in full compliance. We are two hundred and ninety feet north of Olivio. Furthermore, I had great, respectful discussions with your principal civil engineer, Mr. Sean Smith. I truly appreciate the discussions that I had with him. For one hour and fifteen minutes, I discussed all the technical, legal, functional, operational ramifications of this case that I strongly am behind this project applicant to go all the way for this request. Because again, from a legal, technical, operational, functional perspectives, this project does not create any of those impacts, nor it is in violation of that policy. Because that policy was based on different set of parameters. Socio-economically, demographically, the area has changed. The areas within the mutual border between Clovis and Fresno are different than two thousand and one, when the two city councils decided to ratify that policy. Twenty years is over. So this applicant, in conclusion, based on hundred percent technical documentation, I'm defending our client to go all the way with this request. They are very nice people. By the way, this is the first project that we are doing for them, that they called me to get involved on this project. So I wanted to make sure that we put it in perspective. We do projects in San Francisco, in Los Angeles, for big development projects from a traffic perspective. I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear. From all those avenues, and ten years serving as the chairman of the planning commission in my home city, and eight years traffic transportation commission as mayor, mayor pro tem, I've gone through, I've seen, I've reviewed tons of these, besides my professional job. This project does not need to get denied. This request doesn't need to get denied for that specific driveway. I'll be more than happy, Madam Chair Hatcher, Chair Pro Tem Hinkle, and other respectful commissioners, to answer any technical or legal questions that you have. As I said, I've been involved on a lot of legal, technical cases in the state of California. I'm well adept with the process. I understand your position. Oh, if we grant approval for this driveway, then what's going to happen to other applicants? Well, we look at the project by its integrity, by its elements, by the traffic that it generates, the potential impact at other driveways. That's the policy. It was for residential, not for commercial. Therefore, I'll be more than happy to discuss with you any questions that you may have. Because to me, it should be a slam dunk when we prepare this document, when we itemize the specific areas of weakness in that policy back in two thousand and one, from a legal perspective and policy perspective. Two, from a technical perspective, this project doesn't have any adverse negative impact. So why would staff make a determination to deny it? Yes, I know two years ago, they came and they purchased, you know, they went through this project, which I was not involved. I understand that. But we've done computer modeling for the future, and I'm attesting to the accuracy and validity of the findings that any other independent engineers in California can come and review our data, our numbers, so that we would be on the same page. Therefore, very respectfully, I request from this body of planning commissioners to grant approval for this driveway that they need because they can't, it doesn't make sense to have a shared roadway driveway with that storage place up north. Plus, the city, the city engineer, the city traffic engineer mentioned that in my discussions, I re-revised the reports to accommodate the city's request that the entrance on Olivio ought to be right in, right out. Then it's going to create more impedances. So that's why we need this driveway. And the proposed driveway would not have any adverse impact. So I don't understand why we are going through all these long discussions when, to me, from a policy perspective, it's very clear. Because there are five projects, existing projects, that are in violation of the city's policy. And also this municipal code of the city of Clovis as a municipal corporation in the state of California. So this applicant cannot be discriminated on that ground that, oh, no, well, you came late. Oh, now you're adding this driveway late. Because we were not involved in that. We were brought in when the city denied it. Immediately, they called me. They said, "We want you to commission this independent, objective traffic impact assessment." So I sent my staff to Clovis to take all the field measurements, and we analyzed them based on the state of the practice, the state of the technology. And we presented to you the report with all the findings. So in short, the approval of this driveway would not have any impedance, nor any negative impact with regard to the flow of traffic that you want to keep Willow as a major arterial. It's going to be a major arterial, because this driveway is going to be far out of the sphere of influence of that subject signal, intersection of Willow at Olivio. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for your time and this opportunity.
Thank you. I believe Tony had an additional comment. Tony, you are now unmuted.
Thank you, yes, and thank you to the planning commission for your patience and staff. Thank you, Mr. Minigar, for your very thorough presentation. We appreciate it. I can imagine having these meetings verbally is additionally exhausting. So I really appreciate your time and attention. As you've heard from the expert traffic consultant, you know, bottom line, the study has indicated that this additional driveway would have no adverse impacts. We respect that staff generally has to work within their set guidelines. I understand that. But it seems that maybe some of these guidelines, like this corridor agreement from two thousand and one, might need to be reviewed and updated. And I think that that's kind of a common thread. As I was listening to the presenter before us, it sounded like a lot of references were to things that maybe needed to be updated and changed. If I can make one request, if Ms. Chau, you could put the slide up that shows the site plan as it is currently approved. If I could have you take a look at that for a minute, each of you, and maybe just imagine yourself in the site, in that, you know, area, driving and wanting to either go in. And that's the one, I think, that shows our request with the driveway. I want to see the one that's approved without that additional driveway. Do you have the other one?
I actually don't. It's, yeah, this is why I-
That's all right. This serves the point. So, you know, without the driveway, if you are going to visit this site, and if you can indulge me for a minute, and each of you put yourself there as a customer, going in either to get gas, or maybe hitting the drive-thru on your way home, a cup of coffee, dinner or something, or if we've got a nice little restaurant in there, pulling in, and you've got one point to drive in from Willow Avenue. That's it, one driveway. You've got one driveway from Olivio. You're driving in, and as you're going to leave the drive-thru or do something, maybe there's a fuel tanker that's dropping off a load of fuel right now. Maybe there's three or four other cars under the fuel canopy, you know, a few other customers at the drive-thru, just vehicles going in and out. It's a little frustrating trying to navigate. We've done a really good job, and staff has worked with us to get the parking alignments and everything to work with the site. We have enough parking at the site, but it's the getting in and out. We've got cars coming in to get the cars washed. I just want you to stop and think how frustrated you might be with one driveway in and one driveway out and trying to work with other vehicles. I know myself, oftentimes, I just drive right on by and not even stop, because I don't have time to deal with that. We need the customers. We want the amenities for your residents, and some of you as well, I hope. And I'm just respectfully ask that you will give consideration to this request and that maybe it's time to update some of those site plans that we have. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant?
I have one question. This is Commissioner Cunningham. When you purchased the site from the previous developer, were you aware of the site, of the access restrictions?
To be quite truthfully, we did see the- To be quite truthfully, we did see the site plan, but when we purchased it, it was not driving the site. We had not visited the area yet.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Did the city of Clovis contact the city of Fresno and inquire as to whether or not they wanted to modify the access recently?
We did for this application. And as applications come in up and down the corridor, that is our practice to reach out to them with each and every one.
And the city of Fresno's response was?
It's consistently been to uphold the 2001 agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Go ahead.
Lily question for you. I just want to, for the record, to indicate that the applicants were notified by planning staff or city staff of the limitations in regards to access, another access to Willow, and decided to continue moving forward with their project. Is that correct? Yes, you are correct. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Minigar, if he's still available.
Yes, sir.
This is Paul Hinkle. How many times have you been to this site?
I have not personally been at the site, but my registered civil engineers have been there. And as you know nowadays, you don't need to be physically at the site. With all the technologies that we have, we can see the site pretty well.
So you personally have not seen the site?
No, sir.
And have your technicians been there many times for a long length of time? Or just there for doing a report?
Not my technicians. My registered civil engineers have been there to assess, to do the investigation of other driveways with respect to this project site, with respect to the proposed driveway for this specific, these two parcels. And they have measured the roadway, and that's why I mentioned there are five existing projects, developments, driveways that are not in compliance and conformance of your own city's municipal code nor in adherence of your policy, which is Policy 3.8, that legally it's not in compliance. So how come this project has to comply? And we are complying with the traffic aspect of it, that this project would not have any adverse impact. It's all numbers. We've collected the data. Anyone is welcome to collect their own data and just analyze it to see what kind of conclusion they can come up with.
Thank you.
So it's not a fair, it's not fair to our project applicant, to our client, to be denied for this, based on those grounds.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Sorry, I'm not going to open up the public portion for anyone here or online wishing to speak in favor of this item?
There is none.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
None.
Okay, I will close the public portion and bring it back to the commission. Comments, questions? Go ahead.
Sorry, Paul, I sit so low, I can't see your light. This is not for a smaller person over here.
Yeah, I feel that this commercial development was aware that access to the Willow corridor was not an option for them. And due to the fact that our city, our neighbor, is wanting us to hold to our agreement, and our engineer also stating that it just doesn't justify having another exit point or entry point. I know that this used to be zoned residential, but even when it was rezoned, it appears that they decided that the current policy or the current plan that they had adopted between the two cities would still be functional. So with that, I have no issue supporting this denial.
Commissioner Cunningham, I am in full agreement with Commissioner Antuna. The traffic study is great. I did go through it, it was very thorough. But it boils down for me to two things. Our agreement with the city of Fresno, we enter into agreements, and we should honor our agreements. And two, that the current developer knew going into this that there was a restriction on the access of Willow Avenue. And nothing, you know, we didn't pull the wool over anyone's eyes. So I'm in agreement, and I'll support the denial as well.
Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any comments?
I would just echo both Commissioner Antuna and Commissioner Cunningham's comments, but I would want to emphasize that, you know, we need to honor our agreements. And that's why I do ask for data, and Sean and others. I'll do my best to try to inquire so we can prepare more specifics ahead of time. But, you know, when we set these precedents, I understand the frustrations that can ensue. I do agree that we need to take and assess each of these on a case-by-case basis. And sometimes variances are warranted. But in this instance, I think the property was planned and planned for the specific development, and I would support leaving it as it stands.
Do you have any comment, Mr. Hinkle?
Yes. I probably go through this intersection 10 times a week. And for many years, many years. I'm talking longer than what the agreement between Fresno and Clovis has been. Traffic is increasing with the development on the west side of Willow in Fresno. It's going to increase the traffic with what their plans they have there. With the increase in development that we're seeing commercially at Willow and Herndon, we're going to see increase of traffic. One thing I have noticed is that making my right hand turn off of Olivio, that many, many people run that stoplight when it turns yellow, and they're going 50 miles an hour. And by having people pull out in front of those people, I think we're only looking for problems down the road on it. One thing I would like to see is that the shared driveway with Darrell Mini Storage, that that access be made wider. I think that would help on this whole project. Also bringing in traffic on that north end, and if they would come in and go east all the way to the back road. You, if you're talking about backing up of traffic due to people buying gas, that would give you a longer route for the cars to go to come in and line up to buy gas. It would keep them from backing up onto Willow. And by doing the same thing, if you bring them in on the north side of the car wash from Olivio also, that would ease a lot of that backing up of traffic on it. In the many years that I've been by there, I bet I have only seen 10 cars come out of Darrell's Mini Storage. Okay? I'm sure there's more than that, they're a very successful business. But there's very little traffic coming out of Darrell's Mini Storage that would impede entry and exit of traffic into this development. But I see a real problem in allowing that entry and exit off of Willow that we can see many problems. People turning north onto Willow from Olivio, coming east. They also have a tendency to speed up and get up to 50 miles an hour quicker. So I can see real problems in people pulling out in front of cars moving at a high rate of speed. So I have a real problem in accepting this appeal, and especially when they knew what the diagrams were, the setup was for this lot when they purchased it. That's all I have to say, thank you.
I agree with the other commissioners and their comments. In when this land was purchased, there was already a site plan. You knew that there was limited access to it. I think there's less concern on my part. We know that Willow is an arterial, we know that it's very busy, that we're not, we don't have a lot of entrances and exits for that particular reason, just like on other streets within the city. I think maybe there was a little more emphasis on the applicant's part in looking at other places that were denied or were approved. When this, looking at it on its own merit, this lot is well-designed. I think your site plan and your map is fine. I don't believe you're going to have as many vehicles backing up as you believe you're going to have. I do believe that you'll be busy, but I don't believe you're going to have a problem with vehicles stacking, like you believe, especially off of Willow Avenue. And in looking at how we design Willow and how we designed everything, I do not see any reason to deviate and make another entrance for this, for this site plan. So I agree with the rest of the commissioners in denying this appeal. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I just want to make one also. One other statement is that with the development of Heritage Grove, we're still going to see increased traffic and stuff, and it's a real problem here. And looking down the road 20 years from now. But I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal.
Second?
Again, motion by Commissioner Hinkle, second by Commissioner Antuna to deny the appeal. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes. And does anybody have any old business? Say none, any new business? Say none. I will adjourn this meeting at 8:22.